Good evening and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, June twenty seventh. In compliance with state law, city council's special and regular meetings are held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that in mind, Jennifer, Councilmember Jennifer Hartzehousen is joining us virtually tonight. With that, I will call this meeting to order. And Krista, if you could please call the roll.
Councilmember Soltis.
Here.
Councilmember Porter.
Here.
Councilmember Hartzock.
Here.
Councilmember Hartzehousen.
Present.
Councilmember Simomo.
Here.
Mayor Pro temp Smith.
Here.
Mayor Wagner.
Here.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you, Krista. Everybody could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. With that, we will move to approval of agenda. Regan, do we have any changes tonight?
No changes, ma'am.
Thank you. Look for approval, motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. Thank you. First up is Public Communication. We have a presentation about Lake Point update. David and Scott. Well, David Greenstein and Scott Jones, I should, for everybody to know, with Brookfield Properties, welcome. Come on up and we're looking forward to hearing what the update is.
Absolutely. I think we have a presentation to go along with it. I'll let them queue that up. Means I've got night and Don coordinated, so that's pretty hard.
And yeah, I think we'll be pretty brief here with the update. I made about six or so slides. And it is a very positive update as far as things are changing and happening. And I will, I will get started with the opening image here that you can see on the screen is of the SRT roundabout. As Don knows, that work has been getting very close to finish. It's exciting to see it come to fruition. I don't know if I actually included the old renderings that we had that show what it looked like versus what it looked like today, but it's pretty cool to see the overall change and how it actually looks quite like what it was intended to. So as we get closer and closer, we'll continue to take images and happy to share that with the city councils as much as you guys like to see it. Thanks for having us, by the way. Nice to come up and give an update. Last time I was here was December. I was new and had not nearly as much information as I did today on the project. I'm much more informed today than I was before. Every day I learn something new still, but last time we were here, we provided a presentation that was more about who this new developer is, and it was a joint venture. It still is. Toll and Brookfield. Toll is joining us remotely. Aaron Hollingberry, I believe, is probably there. He can answer any questions as they come up. But today we wanted to kind of focus a bit more on the Brookfield side and the fact that we're taking kind of a lead on the master development portion and kind of speak to what we told you before about Brookfield and our means, methods, how we do business and how we build communities and tie that back to what's happening today. So before I get to that, I wanted to just kind of give you the high level, what we've done since December. And this slide here talks about that. Grading. As you guys know, the site's been importing dirt for quite some time. Three hundred and thirty thousand new yards of dirt, continuing to get more every day. The ebbs and flows, it is subject to what's available in the rest of the Puget region. Our contractor, Goodfellow Brothers, has been pretty darn awesome at finding good quality dirt to continue to bring it in as we continue to see Lake Point come back to its reclamation quantities. And let's see here, we've assembled a high-quality team. So well, next slide, we'll talk more about that. That's why I'm really open with it, but there's a lot of new folks involved in the project. And I I know that it's been a challenge to make sure everybody in the whole city team knows who all these folks are because ultimately there's so many different design teams working in different projects. And so we've actually come up with some solutions there to help with orienting everybody to the projects so that people stay informed and have a a place to go if they're confused about who's working on what. The entitlements for the project, we got in March, the approval of our preliminary plot for the Maple Hills five development. Twenty-two lots, which are going to be hopefully permitted soon. We are getting, we're just now responding to our first comments from the city. And hopefully with minimal comments that we think we have, we'll be getting a permit soon and we'll get started with that construction project this summer, which is great, which means we might be have, have lots ready to go in the early part of twenty-four for Toll Brothers to start building new homes. So that's a great milestone for us early on in the project. We also have the phase two portion much bigger. Instead of twenty-two, we have three hundred and twenty-six lots that we're planning for this next biggest, probably the biggest residential phase of the project as far as single family or is. It's required a heck of a lot of information to be back and forth, and we're doing, I think, an excellent job at facilitating a process that everyone can understand. It's taken us some time to get there, but we're feeling pretty good about it. So that is anticipated to be submitted very shortly, probably end of the month, this month or early next month. Obviously, we got a holiday weekend coming up. Major infrastructure, Lake Point Boulevard, that project, we anticipate to get started very soon. That's in for permit as well with the city. And we've modified and tweaked things to get it to align to what the various districts need, whether it be Seuss Creek Water District. And so we're feeling good and confident about that project getting started this summer and continuing probably all the way through at least next fall, but probably targeting by the end of the year at the very latest, we would have that road completed, which I know will be a huge milestone for Covington as that creates the Covington Connector piece, which relieves so much traffic right over here downtown. So I'm going to go through this very quickly. I don't want to spend too much time, but the teams that we've oriented this project, we've kind of broken it up into the various chunks of projects, master plan, portion, kind of taking in everything around the project, geotechnical engineers, surveyors, transportation, biologists, all of the various pieces you need for a project to be successful. Maple Hills is a separate project, as we talked about, the twenty-two lots at the hill. Lake Point Boulevard has got its own engineers. I mean, we walked into the door here and we had like four engineers on there. I was like, how many engineers do we have? All right, what do they eat? What's each one doing? How do they play into each other? How do we coordinate all of that? And we've wrestled around and figured out who's doing what, and we've kind of gotten a much more well-oiled and coordinated machine. So that project's being undertaken by the same engineers who did SR eighteen and the, the Two Hundred and Fourth Street Avenue pace with some help from other consultants as well. And then the Wildlife Crossing, which I'll get to in a little bit, with some other consultants there. Phase two entitlements, blue line, they're probably are most critical engineers that are doing the master plan as well. So and I think you guys have this, welcome to share this PowerPoint with the, the group if you guys want to reference it at any point and look at it next time. I'm sorry, real quick to go back to you, the Brookfield Advantage, the reason why I put this up on the slide is that the, the original presentation we gave in December talked about what that Brookfield Advantage is, and this is to represent how we culminated in finding the right experts across the industries to help support the project. And leveraging that is so key to Brookfield's success is finding the right experts and people who are specifically know information in those regions, and that's been the case so far. So then the other part, the what we do, Brookfield, how we do it, and why we do it. This was also some, some pieces we referenced before. And so the half, the what we do is imagine, create, and operate. And so the Wildlife Crossing reference is kind of this kind of a baby of mine. I find it very interesting. We're creating an opportunity for wildlife and human beings to enter into the same place. And that seems kind of interesting in the, in a design theory. But we're putting it into a practical manner and we're looking at design opportunities to do that safely, to do it with security and thoughtful, thoughtful security. And furthermore, there's going to be an art component in there. And so all of this is going to come together, I think, in a very interesting way, which will make for something that's different that you might not see anywhere else. Low on Washington State, because I couldn't find any crossing that has these two things molded together. So it's going to be an interesting piece of the project. And I think it'll be something that folks will focus on, especially as you come hiking off trails and systems throughout the Maple Hills area. How we do it on a foundation of values. So I think we've made some efforts to partner with the Arts Commission. Marita, who's not here, but she's our marketing director. She actually lives in Maple Hills. She used to be on the Art Commission. So we've started the conversations with local artists to get them involved in the project, including with the the Wildlife Crossing, and we'll continue to look for more opportunities to integrate that community into the development. And yeah, we're going to continue to identify those spaces beyond just what the requirements are of the DA. And the why we do it. And so to build a better world together, right? And so what does that mean? Well, we're looking at all of these different pieces of how we communicate and do it together. And so the Maple Hills community up the hill, we're working on a methodology, hopefully, to get us to annex in the Maple Hills community into their HOA, which I think would be really beneficial for them. It just kind of makes sense because they're right next to it. It's just another subdivision. They've been wonderful to work with. The collaboration has been easy and seamless so far, which is honestly like, I was taken aback by how the kind of the yinbiism, the yes in my backyard, and it's been great. So I think we're going to continue to have a nice relationship. And also it's a great opportunity for us to just ask their opinion on what they'd like to see in the rest of the community, as we'd like to continue to ask and, and see what people are thinking and are valuing. And then the last thing is, is working with Public Works and with Don. It's been really helpful to work towards this TIB improvement board, a funding opportunity to source that funding for the Lake Point Boulevard. And I know TIB had that money. It was really difficult for us to figure out how to wait until you do it. And it's been really great working with Don and his group on ways to implement that, get the most value out of it for the project, but also make it you know, meaningful so that TIB can be part of the ribbon cutting when we get to the completion of that project. That'll be the last piece of the Covington Connector. TIB will finish that off for us. So that's been a, a nice doing it on all sides. Okay, so that's kind of what's been going on. What's next? Twenty-three now to twenty-four, we got a lot going on between planning entitlements, infrastructure, and, and other critical elements, as I point out here. With the planning, we're, you know, we're continuing to meet with regional developers and seeking proposals for commercial development. Open to questions tonight for Scott and I to answer as much as we can. That is definitely an important part. We know it is for the city. It is for us as well. We want to find the right commercial developer and the right product and mix and everything else that we can, we can get for Lake Point. And we know how important it is to get that in tune with the rest of the residential development for Toll. And yeah, we've been working with the planning department to get our FAQ up there. It took a little longer than we probably wanted to, but we've trying to understand the interaction, but we've gotten to that point. It's been good to get that up there to allow for some, some common questions to be asked and answered. Again, with entitlements, again, seeking to get these kind of going and figuring out the right process and structure so that the next one after gets easier. First one's always the hardest, and when the first one is the biggest, it's extra hard. So this is going to be a learning process for all of us, but I think we're, we're figuring each other out, figuring out the needs of everybody, and then we'll hopefully be more seamless and it'll things will be easier and updates will be easier as well. And then with infrastructure, yeah, I mean, with Roundabout being near complete, we've, we've come up with some pretty fantastic plans with Seuss Creek. We're considered, we're seeking an opportunity to eliminate lift station that was originally conceived on the project, and we think that will, one, make the land value more usable because you won't have a lift station. And also they have to live next to a lift station, which is fantastic for a lot of people. So it's been great working with that group and we are moving for that as quickly as we can, as we rep, it's needed for the first phase, the first larger phase of development. And then the other thing is just, again, I talked to the the organization. We need, we need more clarity. Who's doing what? How does the city as a, a consultant-led review team, who are those folks? How, what's the functionality? So Selena and I worked, had a nice conversation with her permit services, senior planner, Andy, to come up with, what does it look like on your site? And what does it look like on our site? Who are all those teams that I mentioned? How does that structure work with people communicating? And so we worked to create an organization chart so that there's just a reference point, especially if new people come on board on either side, city, city council, the developer, so that we have some kind of a template to get there. So that's a lot. I feel like I talked really quickly. Apologize that I sometimes do that, but I hope I could give you a lot of information over the last six months because it's been quite busy. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions from the city council or, or any other folks.
Does anybody have any questions in the council? Jennifer, do you have any questions?
I do not. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you.
Oh, we got one.
No, just, um, I probably will have questions, but I think I'm going to take them offline and email just so that it'll probably take more time than we have here to.
Love to, yeah. You have my email address, I'm assuming somewhere?
Sure we do.
Yep.
You'll find it.
Right. Well, thank you for a great presentation. I really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Always great to hear what's going on.
Happy to do it. And I'll see you guys at the end of the year, if not earlier, I guess.
Okay.
All right.
Great. Thank you both very much for being here. Next up is a presentation on body worn cameras. King County Sheriff's Office Captain Todd Miller, welcome. Thanks for being here tonight.
Yeah, I did not bring a fancy PowerPoint because it would bore you to death on the body worn camera. I'm Captain Todd Miller from the King County Sheriff's Office. I have about twenty-eight years in law enforcement, eighteen here at the King County Sheriff's Office, and ten as deputy sheriff in California. Most of my career has been spent in training or in special operations in law enforcement. As the training unit captain, I got assigned the body worn camera program. It also includes in-car video. This is one of the Axon AV3 body. Feel free to pass it around. It's a little better to have show and tell with these. So about a year ago, we started working towards selecting a body camera for our department and in-car video system. And the idea behind that is to improve the transparency within the King County Sheriff's Office and our contract partners, City of Covington being one of them. With this, we selected Axon. We selected to go with the AV3 body camera. Axon is kind of the industry standard for body cameras around the world. It's in service with many police agencies across the country. I'm sure you've all seen videos from the body cameras that have the Axon symbol and they'll say AV2, AV3, et cetera. This camera is designed to have about twelve hours of battery life. Its video quality is seven twenty P, at least that's what we have it set to. It can run several hours of video before it has to be downloaded. And all of our uniform deputies and sergeants will eventually be issued a body cam. Currently, I have about a hundred and forty-three in service at the sheriff's office. I have forty-nine cameras for in-car video at the sheriff's office. Southeast, the region you guys live in for the sheriff's office, is the next deployment phase for my body cameras. I have an additional eighty body cameras coming in July. And those cameras should be out in August, and you will start seeing them here in the city of Covington and the surrounding area. With the body cameras, some of the advantages they give us, they show the good work that our deputies do day in and day out. Ninety-nine percent of the time, they show that good work. Also, one percent of the time, they're going to show where we need to have some improvement. And it will help us have some accountability and performance standards for those deputies who might be underperforming. Already, we've had some body camera footage come out. Cairo Seven ran a news story where one of our deputies pulled a man from a burning car. That was captured on one of my body cameras, day one. It was issued to a body camera instructor who happened to turn it on and have it there for that event. So we're starting to see video come in, or starting to see the benefits of that. As far as the city of Covington, Covington is concerned, your uniform patrol folks will be getting body cameras. The expectation is that they will have that body camera with them. I mean, you can see it's a small device. They'll be responsible for maintaining it and turning it on and capturing critical events that occur. Some of the things that we ask is that our deputies turn it on when they have public contact. So it won't be on all the time and running. But they will turn it on by pressing that center button a couple of times. And that will capture the event. The camera is always running. Always looping video. We've currently set our body cameras for thirty seconds of video when they're in the ready. So if a deputy gets out, something's going on and they forget to turn on their body camera, but a few seconds later, they turn it on. We've captured the thirty seconds prior to that. We just don't capture audio prior to that. These are all linked to all of the other body cameras in car video and something we call signal sidearm. Signal sidearm detects us drawing a pistol from a holster and will automatically turn our body cameras on. And it will turn the body cameras on around, all the body cameras that are around. When you turn the red lights on in your car, if you're equipped with in-car video, it will turn your body camera on automatic. We're currently in the process of purchasing Taser ten, which is the new taser that has come out. It is linked to the body camera. So when they remove it from their holster or arm the taser, the body camera automatically comes on. So there's a lot of very interesting features with these. That's just about the body camera and a little bit about the program. The backside of that is what we do with all this video. And all of this video is sent to Axon, and our contract with Axon is for cloud-based storage of all this video. Currently, we use evidence.com as the platform to do that. So our deputies download the video at the end of their day. Video goes to the cloud, secure cloud. And then it's recalled when we need it to share with prosecutors, share with others within the department. There is public disclosure with these, and our public disclosure unit had to grow significantly for this project to work. Something that is part of the public disclosure avenue in this state. Faces are blurred of people that are not involved, of minors. Sometimes if we enter a home based on the circumstances, we're entering the home, that would be blurred. There's a lot to the public disclosure rules and how we follow that. Our public disclosure unit is following the standards that have been set forth by the state. Gave you the camera to kind of pass around. There's different mounting devices that just mount it to our uniform. But I wanted to answer any questions you guys might have about body cameras, how they work, and how we intend them. Just council, any questions?
No, I just appreciate it. And you answered most of the ones I was going to ask about public disclosure and storage and is that storage cost now, is that something that will be rolled into the contract going forward? Who's paying for that?
I believe it will be.
Correct.
That's part of contracting's job, not mine.
Yeah.
Mine's basically the implementation and rollout, and I'm kind of the subject matter expert for body cameras for us. As far as the financial side, that's with contract.
And do, I just wanted to, these cameras have, so I notice it's got a fairly robust attachment, but you know, I can see if you're wrestling with someone, it could fall out. Does it have a GPS or anything, just so you can find it later or?
Yeah, so be. This camera, as do all of the AV3 cameras, automatically send out a signal that tells us where the camera is at when it's in that ready mode. When I turn the camera on, it's constantly sending that GPS signal. We also pay for a feature called Respond. And Respond would allow me, if let's say your mayor is a deputy out working in the field and he has his body camera on on a call, I can go in to respond. I can look up his body camera and I can go live to that body camera and view the image live that it's capturing. So it would allow me to immediately go to that camera. That feature is not turned on department-wide at this point. But we are looking at that. And there are a lot of features that we currently don't have turned on until the camera program is fully rolled out, and we can evaluate them as we go forward.
So I appreciate that. And at the training facility in Kent, they've got signs in and out of the, well, basically, if you've been there, you'll turn off your camera when you're going in the restroom, but then they got a sign coming back out. Make sure you turn it back on. I could see where people forget. So what's the, what has been the practice so far, and people being asked to turn on their cameras? And if that doesn't work, well, I guess what's the next?
So if you look at that camera that I have for you guys to pass around, it says ready on the top, right? I can put that camera in what we call sleep mode. And that will prevent it from being turned on by other cameras. And what we ask our deputies to do is when they enter the office, when they're entering the restroom, turn their camera to sleep mode, which means that it can't be turned on remote. Right? So if I take my taser out, test my taser, it's not turning on every body camera in the precinct and running video. If there is a, if there is something that triggers that to start recording, the body camera beeps and vibrates to tell the user that, hey, I just turned on. You can push the select button on the side for an inadvertent activation. If you do that within ten seconds, it marks it as an inadvertent activation and sets it for delete. If for some reason you failed to put your camera in sleep mode, you're in the restroom and it came on and you failed to hit the inadvertent activation. Our protocol is to contact a supervisor, let them know the circumstances of that. That supervisor then sends the email to public disclosure and we restrict access to that video until it can be deleted. There is a process for reviewing that before we delete it to make sure that we're not losing a video that could really be a video of misconduct, that somebody said, no, that's inadvertent activation. So there, there is a protocol for that. We've actually had it happen already. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but it has happened.
And then just building in that muscle memory to remember to turn it on, I guess. I'll be curious to see officers, I'm implying, but their compliance with that, just how long it takes for them to remember, oh.
Yeah.
And when, when it becomes second nature, I'm going, I'm talking, I'm just doing it. So.
So when we issue them a camera, they get four hours of training with that camera, which includes scenario-based training for them to learn to turn on the camera, how they have it positioned on their body to best capture things. Kind of give them a little bit of that trial and error in training. Then there's a hundred and eighty days that we've built in from when someone gets their body camera for them to be fully compliant with our policy, because we realize that this is a change from our ordinary business. Right now, our compliance rates are near a hundred percent, deputies getting them turned on when they're supposed to. So we're doing very well. We've actually been received well by most of the deputies. I think most of the deputies realized this tool is really there to protect them. So we, we've had a good response from deputies.
I have one more. Do you have a question?
I'll wait.
No, go ahead.
No.
So Washington is a two-party consent state where if I want to record somebody's conversation, unlike other states, you have to get that other person's consent. How does that work in?
Not so much with body cameras.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. How's that work?
Yeah. So there are some statutory exceptions
Okay.
for uniformed police officers with body cameras. It's part of our policy that we tell you that you're being audio and video recorded.
Correct.
At that point, I don't necessarily need your consent.
Yeah. Thank you. That's it.
Yeah, that was along the same vein. If the camera is on and the officer is driving or walking and they, the camera catches something else that might be a crime and/or if, if there's an officer in the area and we know their camera's on, can somebody ask for that film to help with another scenario? So that would be less about the officer's behavior and more about.
Yeah, so there are some specific public disclosure rules about video you can get and how you can request it. Your request needs to be specific and related to how you have a reason to get that video. There will be a lot of video where we capture things inadvertently that people may be interested in. I am certain that attorneys will be very interested in seeing video of what has occurred. The city of Seattle actually used some body camera and in-car video to find the killer of one of their police officers. They looked at video that was taken by responding units for vehicles that had been leaving the scene. We'll have that same ability with all of our body camera and in-car video footage. I have the ability to bring it up now and bring up any of our recordings as do many of our detectives.
Yeah, I'm thinking maybe like car accidents or something like that where.
Yeah. If the camera's on, or if it was turned on within that thirty-second window, right? Because that, that camera's always capturing video. It's just it's looping over it every thirty seconds.
Interesting.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
One more. Thank you. So did I understand correctly that will Covington be facing those in, in August?
Yeah, City of Covington should start seeing them come online in August. Part of the reason I'm a little hesitant to say you'll fully have them or not is I don't know how many cameras yet. I'm getting them from Axon. The delivery schedule is I'm supposed to get some cameras. I'm supposed to get about eighty cameras, which should do all of southeast King County for me. I don't know if I'm going to get all eight. It's kind of supply issue at this point.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you very much for the presentation. It's great to hear.
And if you do have questions, go through your chief and people always reach out to me and I can answer.
Okay. Thank you very much for being here tonight. Next is a presentation of the five-year plan and subregional implementation plan. And we have with us King County Regional Homeless Authority, Abby Anderson, Alexis Mercedes Rink and Nigel Herbig. I believe we're all here tonight. And Abby, are you presenting or who is presenting?
Hi, thanks for having us. Alexis and I will both be presenting.
Okay. Well, thank you for being here tonight. And Alexis has been a long time. So thank you for being here. I don't see her. Where is she?
All right, Alexis is gonna share screen.
Oh, there you are. Okay. Yeah. All right, it's all yours.
Thank you. Alexis, we can't hear you.
Does that work?
Yes.
Apologies. All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for having us tonight and wonderful to see you all. For those who don't know me, my name is Alexis Mercedes Rink. Some of you may know me from my work at the Sound Cities Association, but coming to you tonight. Um, as I, as the Director of Subregional Planning at the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. Would love to, uh, allow my colleagues to introduce themselves briefly before we get into tonight's presentation. And so Nigel?
Yeah, Nigel Herbig, I'm the Intergovernmental Relations Manager for the Authority. Thank you for having us tonight.
And my name's Abby Anderson. I am the South King County Subregional Planner with the Regional Homelessness Authority.
I'll share my screen and Abby will get us rolling into tonight's presentation.
Awesome. Um, all right. So we are here to provide some background on the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. And then dive into our five-year plan and talk a little bit about our subregional implementation plans as well. So we can move to the next slide where we have our theory of change, which is what we like to ground all of our work and decisions in. And it says, if we create a homelessness response system that centers the voices of peoples of experience, then we'll be able to meet the needs and eliminate inequities in order to end homelessness for all. So a little bit of background on the Regional Homelessness Authority and kind of how we got here today. Um, back in twenty eighteen, um, in twenty nineteen, the National Innovation Service came to King County to evaluate our homelessness response system and determined that we will benefit from a more coordinated system, um, and a regional approach that centralized the homelessness response system and standardized that same system. In twenty twenty, um, sorry, in twenty nineteen, there we, King County and the city of Seattle signed an interlocal agreement to form the Regional Homelessness Authority. In twenty twenty, things kind of went on pause as the COVID pandemic hit and the kind of landscape of homeless services changed along with it. In twenty twenty-one, we hired our first CEO, um, in April, and so we are just a little bit over two years old. And ever since that hiring, we have been hiring up, um, a robust team of individuals. And in late twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, all the way until today, we've been working on really, um, taking over the homelessness system, understanding all of the contracts and the work involved with that. Um, looking at the different data elements that we now, how was within our agency and then thinking critically about service redesign, which starts with the five-year plan we'll talk about soon. We can go to the next slide. The King County Regional Homelessness Authority, um, like I said, is really established to lead a unified approach to dramatically reduce the number of unsheltered people in our communities. Um, we have long, sort of the next slide. Our community has, has long known, um, many of the solutions to homelessness. So now through one centralized approach between Axon, what we know, um, to really scale that up and we meet the needs of everyone in King County. Go to the next slide, perfect. Um, so we are striving to do that by offering the infrastructure, the coordination and the centralization of resources to make that scaling up possible. A little bit about, um, our actual role and scope. Um, we ta- take over the unified planning and coordination of, of funding and services for people experiencing homelessness. We oversee policy, contract management and performance management. So a lot of the service providers that contract with us, we work closely with them. We are now the continuum of care, um, which is required by HUD, um, previously known as All Home. So we take over that to receive federal funding from HUD. Um, we created a new ombud's office that serves as a point of contact, um, for accountability for folks experiencing homelessness. So anyone in the homelessness system that touches the system can contact our ombud's office. And then we finally established clear metrics and milestones for measuring success and for ensuring accountability and transparency across the entire system in King County. Can move to the next slide, which shows a little bit more about kind of what happened when the, um, interlocal agreement was signed. We know that we can be a little bit of a confusing agency. So it's important to remember that we are a public funder. We distribute funding through service contracts, but we don't engage in housing capital or development. Um, we do oversee a lot of data such as the homelessness management information system, which is that acronym in the middle section, HMIS. Um, and then we coordinate a lot between jurisdictions and of course for, for the contracted providers that we oversee. We think of ourselves sometimes as the emergency room for folks experiencing homelessness. Um, and you can see here just the different things that the city of Seattle and King County kept versus the things that we took over. Go to the next slide, which is another way to kind of think about what we are doing, um, and who we are. So we are a special jurisdiction government, um, agency. We receive and administer public funding. We administer programs and policies and partner with prob- public and private organizations. But we are distinct and different from the King County Department of Community and Human Services and the city of Seattle's Human Services Department. Um, both of those still exist, but they are not us. And then we are different from, um, different housing authorities across the county. Um, and we are an agency that cannot levy any taxes. All right. So one slide that just shows a little bit of our progress to date. So in twenty twenty-two, we housed more than fifty-six hundred individuals, couples and families. We engaged over one thousand people throughout twenty twenty-two, both through, um, a project called the Understanding Unsheltered Homelessness Project. That's what that UP acronym is. And then of course, the five-year plan. Um, we deployed a successful emergency housing voucher program that had a one hundred percent utilization rate, which was nearly twice that of our peer communities and was able to house over fourteen hundred households. We, um, are working on launching our re-procurement using an actual procurement manual and thinking about what that might look like. Um, once we start really settling in with the contracts we've taken over and looking to how we can engage with that in twenty twenty-four. We have ensured encampment resolutions, our focus on housing and improved coordination and effectiveness of our severe weather response. And then finally, um, something we're really excited about because just this month, um, our implementation board and governing committee unanimously approved um, the five-year plan. And so with that, I will pass it back to Alexis and she can talk more about the five-year plan.
Well, thank you so much, Abby. And you'll be hearing from Abby momentarily as we talk about a South King County Subregional Implementation Plan. But as Abby mentioned, we are very excited, um, to share with you all, uh, that we have a approved five-year plan. And tonight wanted to present on a little bit about the process, but also what kind of content is, is in the plan. Um, and happy to share follow-up material related to it. To start us off with some of the process of how we developed the five-year plan throughout summer and fall of last year. Uh, we went through a pretty robust community engagement process. Um, we held a series of workshops with subregions with system partners, uh, such as healthcare, school, behavioral health, so on. And, um, also held workshops focused on the needs of distinct subpopulations such as families, survivors of gender-based violence, um, those exiting incarceration, really to get a robust understanding of what are some of the geographic needs? What are the needs, uh, in terms of connecting with other systems? And then what do different individuals who may have full different identities need when they're accessing the homelessness response system? Throughout, uh, the fall and winter, um, we began developing, uh, the content rooted from all of that community engagement and informed with some of the uh, best data that we had available and went through a pretty robust review process where we were having also, uh, city staff around the region engaging and weighing in. Throughout that process, we released a first draft of the plan in twenty twenty-three, um, where we had a then very robust public comment period, including a survey that was available to the public that received six hundred and forty responses, including over two thousand, I think it was over twenty-five hundred comments. Our team read through all of those, uh, and paired with that, we held a, uh, continued to receive feedback from cities, uh, both from meetings, but also receiving a number of city letters and then also want to elevate our engagement feedback from, um, SCA and uh, our work with SCA staff as the Public Issues Committee also weighed in. Um, and then also engaged with a number of providers and partners. We heard from a lot of people, I think is what we're trying to say. And took a dramatic look at restructuring the plan in light of everything that we had heard. Um, and in that restructuring throughout May and June, um, working with our boards to, um, refashion the plan in and with that, um, in June, taking, having both of our boards, uh, vote unanimously to approve the, approve the plan. And so with that overview and process, I'm gonna walk through a little bit of what is the, the primary content that's within the five-year plan. Starting of course with our overall singular goal, which is to bring unsheltered people in aside in a way that meets their needs as swiftly as possible. And that one, one goal really grounds and centers, uh, the focus of our, our plan on addressing unsheltered homelessness. This aligns well with the formal charge of the King County Regional Homelessness Authority to oversee the crisis response system for King County. And our real goal here is to continue to come together, to be better aligned and coordinating if we're to be successful in future years. The beginning section of the plan at first grounds us in data. And so, um, in this section, you will see a variety of methods that have, um, been taken across the years to try and measure the scale and ways to count homelessness from looking at statistical projections, looking at an annual number versus a moment in time number, looking at information that we have in administrative data sets. But what we really emphasize in this section is that regardless of method, all of our numbers around how many folks are experiencing homelessness, um, indicate that. And when we look at our current, um, supply in terms of shelter beds and permanent housing beds, we indicate that we do not have enough options, uh, to direct people to. And so further, we also are continuing to work with system partners to garner a better understanding of how many people experiencing unsheltered homelessness um, are, are dying while experiencing unsheltered homelessness. Three hundred and ten of our unhoused neighbors died while experiencing homelessness last year and so far, um, well over eighty individuals have perished while being homeless. And we include this information, um, in our plan, not just as a data point, but as a grounding point, uh, what centers our work, knowing that our work deeply involves the lives of our, of our community members and wanting to center our plan in that and. The key elements of the plan really focus on grounding us in our current reality and how we can be responsible stewards of the homelessness response system. The plan focuses on how we can unify and coordinate funding. With this, um, we can develop a unified response and consolidate funding for homeless services and partnerships with, in partnership with jurisdictions around the county. We also aim, uh, to improve system-wide accountability, effectiveness and efficiency. We want a contract to ensure consistent best practices, data collection and reporting. Um, and with that, also investing in policies and programs with proven outcomes. So ultimately, we are working to build a homelessness response system where individual providers are, have what they need to do the work well. Our service providers are well-coordinated with their peer agencies and have the capacity to contribute to dynamic data and operate in the subregions across the county and offer services that address the needs of folks that hold disproportionately, uh, represented identities in our homeless populations such as Black, Indigenous and trans individuals. And then we also want to ensure that there are strong connections between systems. So the homelessness response systems connection, for example, to the foster care system or hu- uh, healthcare system. Um, trying to improve those connections so we can have supportive transitions for folks. Um, but also these systems working to prevent homelessness in the, in the first place. And so when we look on these three levels and how we're trying to build towards, uh, these, uh, uh, kind of success statements, we are going to be doing the following. Um, our first level is really looking at what's happening on service provider organizations. Um, but we want to be able to build on what service providers are doing well. Support of best practices and fund the programs that people want to access. We're also focusing on how we can pay and ensure, um, equitable wages for frontline staff. Um, so it, we know that in order to strengthen our homelessness response system, we need to incorporate robust changes to support these organizations by, again, providing increased wages, staffing, love, appropriate staffing levels, flexible funding and trainings also. Um, so that we can ensure that, um, the best practices are being cared, are carried out when caring for our community members. When we look at our work on, um, improving the network of homeless services, we are looking at ways that we can measure progress for accountability while also improving, um, data to better match people to the appropriate service for them. And improving coordination between our service providers. Additionally, we're looking at how we can increase the use of federal social programs to better leverage additional resources to supplement our system and, and support people. And then when we look at our system-to-system connections, we want to really, um, look at the way the homelessness response system is interacting with our other systems, again, like healthcare, education, incarceration. And so, um, this tier is often, uh, characterized by a lack of collaboration or alignment between system partners. There's limited connective tissue. And so we have a lot of folks that may fall between the cracks in these systems. And so we want to work towards and ensure that there's no wrong door when accessing services. People can get the help they need because systems are working together to prevent homelessness. And so some of the work that we are doing here include a, uh, creation of data sharing agreements and establishing clear role and accountability when it comes to working with our system partners. Overall, we're defining success when we see that we have more shelter beds and housing options to direct people to. People have the services they need and can move through the system quickly. Fewer people are returning to living outside after shelter and more people are permanently housed. With that, across the years of the plan, um, we know that we are really focused on making some organizational improvements to our operations, but where we can transform the system as a whole. And so our immediate priority is to stabilize KCRHA operations and build our infrastructure. We'll then be focusing years two and three, um, on planning and executing a full system rebid. So this involves the posting of RFPs and really examining, um, how we are distributing the portfolio of, of services. And so also focused on how we can defragment the system in that rebid process. And so we'll have the rebid ruled out and operationalized over the course of the next two years. And as those changes take effect, we anticipate being able to more effectively serve people in need of services and to increase the number of people moving through the system quickly to permanent housing. And so, under this plan, we anticipate a few things will be different. Um, we're really working and striving towards a future state where people experiencing homelessness will be able to access services, no matter where they live, regardless of race, age, gender or any other identity. Service providers will have real-time data, uh, that will allow them to serve people faster and more effectively. Social service systems will be able to work together to prevent homelessness and overall our communities then will see less unsheltered homelessness. Um, happy to provide more information about the five-year plan and the link of how you can view it online. But with that, I'm going to toss it back to my colleagues, uh, Abby to talk about subregional implementation work. Abby?
Thanks Alexis. Just a few more slides for y'all. So in, um, tandem with the fifth five-year plan that was recently passed, we are also engaging in subregional implementation plan. Um, so the city of Covington falls in our southeast subregion. Um, and this subregional implementation plan will ask, what does it mean to implement act on the activities in the five-year plan in southeast King County? So there are several key components of the subregional plan. Um, and you can see them here. I won't read them all out for you, but essentially we're going into some background on um, what KCRHA is and what the five-year plan is, talking through again, our engagement and development process. We've also outlined subregional analytics that identify gaps, needs and strengths in each subregion. Um, and then looking at how we are aligning with the cities, what resources and investments the cities are bringing to the homelessness system. And finally, the meat of the plan is really taking those activities from the five-year plan and assigning them key actions, timelines and metrics. Um, so a little bit more about that, um, we have identified thirty activities from the overall five-year plan that Alexis identified that will be tailored to each subregion. These activities were identified in collaboration with a lot of different community partners throughout South King, uh, South and Southeast King County. Um, and the reason that they will be tailored is because they need to be, you know, specific, in order to be most successful, need to be specific to the unique subregion. Um, that each, that each municipality takes that up. Um, some of the activities, so I think there's about seventy-five, seventy-six activities total, the remaining forty-five or six um, are going to be done by KCRHA. They're gonna be done region-wide, again, in support of that centralization and standardization that KCRHA was founded upon. Or they're simply KCRHA administrative tasks that we just need to do in-house. Um, so these action steps and timelines will be developed in partnership with the South King County community. Um, and also open to hearing your feedback today on kind of how you envision the subregional implementation plan to look. And the next slide actually has just some prompting questions. Um, I know we just threw a lot of information at you, so no pressure to, you know, be responding to these now, but just some things that we are thinking about and wanting feedback from municipalities on is what you want to see in the subregional implementation plan? So what should be built in? What might be missing from your current homelessness response? The level of guidance you want to see in the plan? Um, how do you like to stay? The level of guidance you want to see in the plan, um, how do you'd like to stay involved and informed? And then if there's any key stakeholders that we should engage, we have about list of over three hundred and twenty so far, but happy always to be adding to that list of folks to really be in touch with as the subregional plans are developed. Um, with that, we will pause and you guys can absorb and we'll um take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Abby and Alexis. Um, first off, can we get that presentation with those questions so that we can? If we have any answers or anything, we can submit them to you. Thank you. Does council have any questions for Abby or Alexis? Sure.
Uh, thank you for the presentation. I, I do appreciate that. Uh, my question is, uh, when you're, you stated that you'd brought in fifty-six hundred individuals, couples and families to permanent housing. What is the breakdown on that? How many, how many uh single mother families was it? How many single father families was it? Uh, breakdown of you know, mo- uh, just women, men, what, what is our breakdown there? Because that's great that we brought in fifty-six hundred, but I know people are going to want those statistics as well.
Absolutely. Thank you for that question. Happy to follow up with the full breakdown, but also want to uplift that our data dashboards on our website do uh provide a way to look at things such as um gender as well as um household size, so looking at families versus uh single adults. Um, and also includes racial demographic data, but happy to pull that specific uh report for twenty-twenty-two for you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Sean?
Um, thank you for this. I appreciate the uh information and, and the um, letting us know about the subregional plans for the southeast. I, I I appreciate that and I know the community will be um happy to know that we are getting in on the ground floor to help tailor uh the approach that will uh work best here in, in Covington and southeast King County. So just a couple of questions or it's quickly off the top of my head on, when we put up the last slide on key stakeholders like other cities, we do have commissions here that include our community members and I would encourage you to, to uh work through the city to reach out to them to see how to engage with our, our uh community. Uh, we have a arts commission, we have parks and rec, we have a uh, human services and an equity commission, just a youth council too, that all I think would bring a unique perspective. Uh, and can provide feedback on what's needed here in, in the city. And then um, we have a number of events, uh like other cities too, that, you know, we probably could we would extend an invite for you to, to table at, um, to raise awareness. So uh, that's one way of getting in front of our group. So um, just a couple of que- well, maybe one other comment. One of the things I would think that the public, public perception or opinion is, is that homelessness is getting worse um in Puget Sound and around the country, um, for that matter. And so I'll be curious to hear how uh the regional homeless authority is communicating to the public on their successes. Um, um, because I think that is a, a big part of it is basically the public thinks it's getting worse and, and doesn't believe that any government entity is doing really anything to put a dent in it. So uh, just more information on how you're communicating, what the successes are, I think would be really, really helpful. So, and that was, one of my questions are, you had a slide that said, what are the tracking metrics and milestones? I'm just curious what some of those metrics and milestones might be.
I'm happy to speak to some of the tracking metrics and milestones and invite one of my colleagues to talk a little bit about some of the, the public awareness work. Um, and so thank you for your question. In terms of tracking metrics, um, we have a number of system performance metrics that we're consistently monitoring. Um, so evaluating um the success of programs, so looking at exits to permanent housing. So somebody who is formerly in the system and if they're exiting to a permanent housing location um, is something that we're consistently tracking, um, performance based on um different program type. So by program type, I mean things like emergency shelter versus transitional housing versus a safe haven and so on. Um, we're, in addition to exist to permanent housing, we're always tracking how many um and uh new people are entering the system and how many folks are currently accessing the system. Um, and then looking at also um how many uh rates of return to homelessness, so how many folks maybe um, uh, may exit into some type of housing option or leave a service, but then come back into the system. And so we would call that a return to homelessness. And then I believe those are the, the major ones that we are, are tracking across the board, but also disaggregating by gender, household size and race where possible.
Yeah, and
Oh, good.
I was just going to address your first question. And first of all, thank you for um the commissions and the events. Um, I really appreciate that and would be happy to um connect with those and, and come to any events and talk about our work. So thank you. Um, in terms of public perception and how K C R H A is communicating, um, yeah, it's, it's certainly a challenge. So appreciate that question. One thing that I've been working on in, in south and southeast is thinking about um, how we can get in front of more community groups, just kind of like what you were talking about and how we um are talking about homelessness um, as a community, right? So we have the homelessness action committee, um, which includes a lot of service providers, community members and um, some city human services staff attend as well. And it's actually been kind of the main focus for twenty-twenty-three is thinking about how we are um approaching community members, the public, different community groups, thinking about, you know, there might be school association groups or rotary clubs and things like that. Um, and going to them and talking about, here's the work that we're trying to do, here's where you can plug into it, here's how we um view and talk about homelessness and what the solutions to that are. Um, so that's kind of where my mind and work has been, especially on the homelessness action committee front. And as we are approaching these subregional plans and really wanting to get both community feedback, we're also community buy-in on those plans.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Christina?
Hi, um, thank you for that presentation. It was wonderful. I can't help but wonder. Um, I sit on this, on the board of Skip, uh, South King Housing and Homeless Partnership. Um, and I just can't imagine that not, or should I say, it would, it would make a lot of sense if we collaborated, at least, and not, maybe not as far as projects, but at least as far as statistical need. Um, I know that this is King County and this one is South King, but it, seeing that you work and are interested in what's going on in Covington and below. Um, I, 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 I don't get privy to the information, but have you discussed anything with Skip yet? And yeah, I see head nods. Um, I think I even remember seeing you Alexis on presenting to Skip once, but um, is moving forward. Uh, obviously this is a little bit older, Skip is a little bit younger, um, as far as a, as a new partnership. But I'm assuming that collaborating on information and on need would prove useful moving forward, no?
Absolutely, yes. Thank you for bringing that up as well. We um are working closely with Skip um and Alexis and I have met with Claire and Dorso, the two uh staff members for Skip. Um, and so we have been talking a lot, you know, both of them are relatively new. Um, to Skip, so they're kind of working, I know you guys have been working hard on the work plan and getting the applications out for the capital development fund. Um, and so we have been working in tandem with them as they're getting their footings and talking more about how we can partner together. Um, and we actually, I believe, are presenting to your July meeting, so looking forward to um, talking there more about kind of like role clarity and collaboration between our two entities.
Right, yes, and I, I do understand that the niche is a little bit different in, in with, with each um committee and partnership, but they don't go one without, without the other.
Absolutely, yeah.
Anybody else? Abby and Alexis and Nigel, thank you very much for being here tonight and presenting a wealth of information and uh we appreciate it. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Take care everyone.
Next is our first of two public comment periods. And before we start that, I have a statement I would like to read. Um, just so it's um in the record. We as a city council are aware of the industrial battery storage facility being proposed in unincorporated King County. We're also aware of the proposal, King Fisher Energy Storage, King County Project Number C D U P two-three dash zero 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 three. However, the city of Covington is not the decision-making jurisdiction in this matter. The King Fisher Battery Energy Storage Project will undergo a comprehensive review process led by King County to study the project and its impacts. This process is designed to ensure appropriate mitigation and response measures are in place to protect the land, wildlife and communities surrounding the project. The facility must also receive all necessary approvals from local fire and permitting authorities before it is constructed. This process includes multiple opportunities for public comment and engagement. And the King Fisher Energy Storage Team has made themselves available to share further information or to answer any questions about the project as it moves forward. We do encourage everyone to follow this project through King County Process and direct any additional concerns to the King County Planning Department at permitsquestions@kingcounty.gov or directly to the King County Lead Planner for this project. Tracy, that's T R A C Y dot C U I at kingcounty.gov. As this project is being proposed just outside the Covington city limits, we asked the developer to present to us so that we could better be informed on the project. King Fisher presented at our regular city council meeting this last Tuesday, June thirteenth. If you wish to see that presentation, our council meeting recordings are posted online at our city website, covingtonwa.gov. We're thankful for our dedicated residents and their desire to keep our children and community safe. Although the B E S S is not within the city of Covington and King County has jurisdiction and permitting authority over this development, we care deeply about this process and do not take it lightly. And we, as the council, plan to further discuss our best approach in dealing with the county on this issue at a future council meeting. So I just wanted to read that into the record so that people know we did have a very um engaged community uh two weeks ago at our council meeting, and we really appreciate all the comments that were brought forward. So with that, we'll move into our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are not directed to the city council nor the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating virtually, click the raise hand button in Zoom. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants you permission to speak, press unmute if participating virtually or dial star six to unmute if participating by phone. Notice to all participants pursuant to state law, R C W forty-two dot one seven eight dot five 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 campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in city hall and or during any portion of this council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the meeting, is prohibited. With that, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address council this evening? Is there anybody online wishing to address council? Please raise your hand. Seeing nobody approached the podium or raised their hand, um, we'll close this first public comment period and there will be an opportunity for a second public comment period towards the end of our meeting. With that, we'll move into approval of the consent agenda, which consists of items C one through C seven. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Let's move into reports of commissions. First up is Economic Development Council, Josh Lyons. I see you online. Welcome. I see you moving over. Welcome, Josh. Are you there? Or did we lose you?
Well, that took a while.
Well, there we go. Welcome, Josh.
I was here and then it wanted me to do a bunch of stuff. Okay, um, I'm going to be quick, guys. Um, wow, uh, that was a lot of uh information in a short amount of time. Um, okay, so Covington Economic Development Committee, uh, we're just doing some summer economic gardening here. Um, we've got uh not a lot of new stuff going on, but a few updates. We're continuing in our work uh on the creation of a downtown association to help support the downtown core, uh, when that really pretty Lake Point project gets going. Um, more recently, we're doing the administrative work uh to set that entity up uh so that we, when we get some financial support, we can actually accept checks and um, start really moving the needle on this. So uh, that's just kind of humming along and, and doing fine. Um, in the meantime, we're instituting what we're calling a business-to-business kind of activity. We've divided the commercial core up into uh different sections and each member of CEDIS is going out in between meetings and chatting up uh one or two business owners, uh, wanting to know what's going well, what is not going well. How can, how can we help support them? Uh, how can uh the, the chamber support them potentially? How can the city support them potentially? So uh, we're looking forward to our first kind of update from everyone as we get into our next meeting. Uh, and then at our joint meeting together, there was a lot of interest displayed for activating some, some of the um, some of, I guess, the concrete jungle, uh, the many parking lots that we have that might not be uh used uh as well as they could be. Uh, so there's been some good discussions going on uh between different stakeholders. Uh, not a lot to say in terms of progress, but I feel like there's a lot of interest and a lot of activity around it. So hoping to, to make some progress there. Uh, and that's about it for me.
Great, thank you, Josh. Does council have any questions? Thank you very much for being here tonight, Josh, and thanks for a great report. Really appreciate it.
You got it. Thanks, guys.
Have a great evening.
You too.
Next is Youth Council. Katie, welcome.
Good evening, council. Um, we unfortunately did not have a meeting in May, so I'll be overviewing from our April and June meeting. But we are excited to say that our applications are now open to ninth graders, which was much of our concern. Uh, they're a part of our youth and we really want them to be engaged in this uh awesome commission. Uh, we also talked about meeting with the Kent School District in March of twenty-twenty-four and then our joint meeting in April of twenty-twenty-four, right after that, because we realized that uh a lot of our concerns are mainly with the school district as youth and uh still being in the school district, so we wanted to direct our questions to them directly. Uh, next, um, is an update on the youth collab, which we've been talking about with other youth commissions across the state. Um, Covington and Sammamish Youth Council are kind of spearheading this whole thing and we're even having a climate march. We're planning one in Seattle in October of this year. Next is our representatives that came June tenth, I believe. Um, that was really helpful. I know I went, I saw some other youth from um my school that went. But other than that, not very many. But I was wanting to encourage more youth to tongue, to come to that because it was really useful to me. And lastly, we're excited to welcome Silas Coffey, who was just appointed to our council. And we sadly had to say goodbye to all of our graduating people. So, thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Really appreciate you being here tonight and also listening in on the interviews we had earlier. So thank you to everybody on your commission. Next is Arts Commission. Riley, welcome.
Thank you. Okay, how did you know my name?
I remember you from the interview.
Wow, I feel extra special. Oh my gosh. Yes, uh, my name is Riley. I'm the co-chair of the uh Covington Arts Commission. Um, I'm stepping in for Patty who couldn't make it today. Um, so uh a lot of the stuff that we do, I feel like you guys have already heard about in previous um meetings, but I'll go through it as quickly as I can. Um, so we've been receiving, um, we sent out a rotating call for art. We've been receiving um lots of different submissions of art from local artists. Um, so uh, we're trying to continue that growth, um, posting on our uh city's Facebook page, stuff like that. Uh, we're using the different art that gets submitted for like local projects such as the vinyl wrap boxes um that we've Um, that we've had installed in the area. I don't know if you guys have seen the one next to Taco Time. And there's a couple next to the schools around. Um, we're actually planning on, um, decorating three more with a, throughout the city. So that's gonna be exciting. Uh, we're also working on, um, a database of creative, um. Business owners in the city of Covington, uh, a resource for people to, um, access, you know. Artists that they may not know of otherwise. Um, so we're trying to build that database, um, just by hand as a group. Um, we're also working on, um, some murals in the city. Um, trying to find a good spot to put them. We were talking about putting a mural. Um, next to the hospital near Costco, um, so we were gonna work with them. Um, they're interested in partnering with us. That's exciting. Um, we are gonna go to Covington Days, July fifteenth and sixteenth. Um, and Kids Fest August twelfth and have a booth with something small for kids to do. Um, and what else? Uh, we're also working on, uh, working with Lake Point. Um, during their construction process, they've been asking us for advisement on, uh, two sculptures and some murals. Um, so we get to, um, have a little say in that, which is really fun. Um, that is all of the updates I have. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? I have one. So you said that you are, the Arts Commission is now working with Valley Medical on a mur- mural at the hospital. Cause at one time.
Um, we were working, I misspoke. We were working for a mural and then they changed their mind and are interested in a sculpture.
Sculpture, okay.
Um, and we are working with Green River to possibly get a sculpture donated. Um, so we're just kind of like being a middle man-ish for that project at this point. Um, to, they don't, they don't have a lot of funding or say they don't have a lot of funding for art. They wanna include some. So we're trying to find a way around the funding issue, which is where Green River kind of comes into play. Cause one of our commissioners, I believe, goes to the school. So.
I was glad to hear that they're starting to feel more open. So thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate the update.
Of course.
All right. Thanks, Riley. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Next up is Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission, David Scalabrini. Welcome.
Thank you, Your Honor and Council. Um, excuse me. So we had another one of our amazing marathon, uh, commission meetings. All of our meetings tend to go. Uh, anywhere from two and a half to three hours. So, uh, but it was very good, very beneficial. Uh, we were excited to have. Uh, Chief Easterbrook as well as Community Care Specialist Darren Patterson join us. And we spent a lot of time, uh, talking with them, getting, uh, more of an idea as to what Darren's role is. Uh, as well as to how we can also, uh, as a commission, give some assistance to him. As he continues to build, uh, his role, uh, within the city. Uh, we got some great information from the chief as well in regards to, uh, questions that us as a commission, uh, dealing with equity and social justice. Have had and and we're been wanting to get answers, uh, and we were very pleased with the information he provided in regards to. Uh, any of the issues that, uh, any of our officers have had in regards to complaints, uh, or anything like that. Um, and so we, it was a very, very good session. So we were very thankful, uh, for them. Uh, we then also, uh, started our, the wrap up our planning for our joint meeting with all of you on July eleventh. Uh, so we did a final review and, uh, finalized all the updates to our, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four work plan. As well of our strategic plan updates and then, uh, went through and organized the agenda for that meeting. So we're excited to share with you, um, the things that we have been doing and what we are looking at, uh, for the future. When we are, uh, meet with you on the eleventh. We then, uh, have finalized our, uh, participation in Covington Days. We're really excited to be there again this year. Uh, what we will be doing is showcasing what the commission has been doing in the past year. Especially the launch of our website with our celebrations calendar. Um, what we will be doing is also engaging with the public and showing, uh, that calendar. Have a big poster showcasing the, the calendar and then asking them, uh, some interactive, we're gonna, our plan, if we can pull it all together hopefully. Is to have a stack of posters to allow them to write down what are celebrations that they and their families participate in. And that they would be interested in seeing, uh, the community, um, get involved in as well. Uh, so they can just get some, some feedback from them. And then, uh, we did our periodic calendar for our updates for July. Happy to announce that for next month. We will be highlighting, uh, fresh French-American heritage month for the month of July. So really excited because there'll be lots of great recipes for those of you that wanna try some good French or French envelopance food. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you, David. Does anybody have any questions?
Wonderful.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here, David. Uh, Human Services Commission, Catherine. Thank you for being here.
Be scared, just brought it to be handsome. I think, uh, good evening, council. Good evening, staff. I'm here to give you our update on a May twenty-fourth Human Services Commission meeting. And actually, I don't have an agenda or minutes or motions that we did because we actually resumed our in-person, uh, con- contracted agency site visits. So we decided to go visit Annu, which is a pre-apprenticeship construction program. Uh, the, so, Human Services Commission has kind of shifted our focus from immediate extant emergent, uh, relief in the pandemic, like food. Uh, going, shifting a little bit to post-pandemic recovery. So we did decide to go see one of our contracted agencies, Annu. I can tell you a little bit about that. It's really awesome. We had a fantastic time. Um, they take in folks and train them in pre-construction trades such as Ocean Tan, uh, forklift and flagger. And also soft skills, as in how to deal with workshop, wo- workplace environments, particularly if you have, uh, issues with racism or misogyny. Uh, they try to place folks in these trades that are, um, underrepresented in the construction ta- trades. So LGBTQIA, uh, BIPOC, Black Indigenous, People of Color and Women. I can give you, if you like, a little bit of data that we collected while we were there, if you're interested. Uh, yeah, thank you for, um, funding them, by the way. Very, very grateful for that. So they have about a ninety percent graduation rate out of, um, their services. And they have about an eighty percent placement rate immediately after their program. Uh, last year, they, uh, graduated nine Covington residents. So far, they've done three, but that was early in the year. Um, they place people jobs for not less than thirty dollars an hour. So we're very, very happy about that. And that's part of our recovery from the pandemic and making sure folks can support their livelihoods and their, their families. Um, there are no fees to enroll in this construction trade. Uh, they give you a voucher for shoes. They provide P P E. Uh, food boxes, travel, gas vouchers, and boots. Um, all the instructors are female because they try to get women also into the trades. Uh, they do drug tests twice a year to make sure that their, uh, their enrollees are doing what they're supposed to be doing. Um, and they also have a really interesting program called Rise Up, which helps, uh. Teach the folks that are graduating from this program how to deal with, uh, conflict in the workplace, particularly if it has to do with racism. And sexism, which is, could, can be perceived as a problem in the construction trades. Their, uh, motto is if you can see it, you can be it. They want to see folks in construction trades that look like them. That's very important to them. Um, other than that, I don't have the agenda for our next meeting because we didn't have quorum. So I don't have that agenda yet, but it should be available soon. And we will have that meeting, just not in our usual time. Uh, is there any questions I can answer for you at this time?
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, about a new down in Tuck Willa. It's fantastic.
No, but thank you.
Okay, and thank you very much. The commission would like to say this is tough work and we were grateful for your leadership and your partnership on this. Going through all of this, it's, it's heavy work, but we get to go do things like this and see these amazing things. So thank you very much for supporting the mission.
Well, thank you for working through that large work. On a regular basis. So thank you.
Thank you.
Pass our thanks on the entire commission.
Oh, I will. I will do that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Catherine. Uh, next is Parks and Recreation Commission, Laura Morrissey. Welcome.
Hi there. Um, so our Parks Commission meeting we had last week was our annual Parks Tour. Uh, where we get out and about and take a look at things and kind of the theme for this Parks Tour was trails, particularly the Jenkins Creek Trail. Um, and as Covington just works to put together parks and we have pieces of trails. And so as a commission, we're looking at, well, how can we make some type of walking connectivity? Whether we're stringing together trails and sidewalks or, um, ultimately the desire is to build out a trail system. But we all know that takes time and money, two things that seem to be in very short supply. Uh, so what can we do with what we have available to us? And so that's what we were kind of looking at. We actually started at, uh, Covington Community Park. Just getting our eyes again on that park, looking at any particular, any potential property acquisitions, um, potential development of phase three. Um, the new surfacing of the field that's coming, seems like there's always something happening in that park. Um, which is good because it's very, very well used. And so things that are used, uh, you need to maintain them. You need to eventually replace things. And so it's actually a good problem to have, I think. We headed down to the Jenkins Creek Trail System right across from Real Life Church, kind of walked around in there, um, looked at. Connecting that more directly into Frontage Road, uh, and talked about how that might become part of a trail network. As Lake Point is developed out. Uh, we walked down into Jenkins Creek Park, took a look at kind of the trouble spots in terms of connecting a trail from the Jenkins Creek Trail System. To Jenkins Creek Park. There's property parcels in the way, um. You, we could possibly connect through sidewalks, but that actually bypasses both parks altogether. So again, uh, some sticky points. And then we went down to Founder's Park, also known as SoCo Park. Um, looked at the trail kind of terminus of where that would be. And again, we've got a lot of parcels in between the trail underpass at Kent Kangley and that park. And then how do we deal with that? We also walked from Jenkins Creek Park through, um, Multicare's property with their permission. And then into the easement that we have, um, at Home Depot and kind of that development there. Looked at what we could do to develop that into a trail network. Um. Again, there's another piece of property in between that and Kent Kangley. So it's like we have all these pieces. How do we make these pieces work together into something cohesive? So it's not a problem that has an easy, like, here's your answer. Um, if it did, I would have given it to you a long time ago, but we continue to work on it and chew on it. And see what we can do just to promote walkability, um, and trail access for the city. It's the number one thing that people want in the Parks Plan, has been for a decade or more. So coming up, we're gonna have an aquatics themed meeting, going to the Aquatic Center, kind of digging into the condition of the pool. And also like looking around at pool activities. Again, another thing in the city that's overflowing and is maxed out. A good problem to have, but still something that we need to kind of look at solutions for. So that is my presentation. If anybody has any questions.
Anybody have any questions, Laura? Nice to meet you. Thank you very much for a great presentation. Thank you. Uh, next, Planning Commission, Murray, welcome.
Evening, council. Good evening, staff. Nice to see everybody. Uh, I'm just here to give an update on our, uh, June fifteenth meeting. Uh, in this last meeting, we had a special speaker come to us from the city of Kirkland and, uh, speak about their missing middle housing, uh, efforts. Uh, was, it was very interesting to see, uh, the, the differences in, in Kirkland and Covington. Um, they have a rather interesting problem in that, uh, their missing middle, uh, affordable housing, uh, works out to be about one point four million. Versus a three point five million dollar normal size house. So it's a, it's a very different problem and he was, he was very concerned that, you know, they, they were at least at that point unable to bring any prices down lower. Um, but it was great to see what they were building and allowing to build in the city. And that one of the really, uh, neat things that they did is they went out to an architectural firm and pre-purchased and pre-approved some designs. For some of these, uh, accessory dwelling units, they're called, or ADUs. And, uh, you can normally expect about, uh, a ten percent cost of your architectural work and the overall cost of building. So if you're building something that's four hundred thousand, you're probably gonna spend about forty thousand on your architectural work. They make these plans available for a thousand dollars to Kirkland City, uh, residents. And they're pre-approved, so they sail through the, uh, larger portion of the permitting process. So that was a really cool thing to see and I, I thought that was, uh, really consider of their, of their constituents to do that. Um, let's see, uh, anyhow, the overall, uh, effort includes consideration of alley access approval for facilities. Uh, and, uh, you know, to work well with existing housing on the property. And also the availability of utilities, uh, that can be a problem when you're trying to put another small building on an already existing single family lot. Or, uh, such, and also, uh, making alleyways available. Something that they're trying to do is to put alleyways down or use existing alleyways between properties and put the accessory dwelling units. Back on that alleyway so that it kind of feels like its own place really, and it has its own access. So there was really neat, it was neat to see the, the buildings that they've seen so far and, and that they're, uh, actually getting a lot of developer involvement with that. So, uh, let's see, next up was our engagement plan, which is our, uh, work with the arts and the equity, uh, commissions. Uh, to come up with a tagline for the, uh, comprehensive plan process. And, uh, the tagline is Covington twenty forty-four, a thriving community for all. Uh, meant to be very inclusive and make sure that everybody is involved in the, uh, in the process of putting this plan together. Um, the Arts Commission, uh, uh, presented by Patty Melton came with a couple of nice, uh, bits of artwork. To go along with all of the, uh, uh, materials. And we ended up picking a couple of those. And I mentioned that you'll be seeing them in the near future. Um. And that takes us on to, uh, uh, one of the consulting firms that the city works with, Burke Consulting, is doing a lot of work, uh, with us. On there with the staff and, and by extension with us, uh, on the comprehensive plan. Uh, they brought this month a draft of the equity approach and metrics for the Covington Comprehensive Plan. Uh, the equity approach calls for an inclusive engagement, policy screening, establishing desired outcomes and tracking the progress. Towards them with all measurements. So we'll be able to see how what we do, uh, comes to fruition and how well it works when it gets deployed. Um, lastly, staff provided us, uh, updates and highlights for the Covington Climate Vulnerability Assessment Policy Analysis. They're gonna come back with more on that, uh, so we'll have more detail, uh, to present and talk about it at a future, from a future meeting. Um, next up, uh, just to note that Covington Days, we will have planning commissioners, uh, at the booth, uh, for Covington Days. And, uh, we're gonna be, uh, doing a comp plan survey and, uh, public engagement on the comp plan process. So that should be pretty fun. Uh, I have a little survey and collect some data from the, from the people there. Uh, at our next, uh, meeting, uh, we'll be having a public hearing for the CIPA Exemption Code Amendments. Um, that resulting, uh, uh, in a planning commission recommendation for authorization to the city council. So more on that from, uh, after our next meeting. Also, you're having an equity approach, approach review. Uh, some more updates on the equity efforts and a comprehensive plan update to introduce, uh, some docket council recommendation items. So that's at the next meeting and, uh, thank you for the opportunity to give you an update on what we've been up to. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Murray, thank you extremely for being here tonight. Always great to get an update on what the planning commissioner is doing.
Yeah, thank you very much. Good to be here.
Thank you. Yep. A great evening. That concludes our reports of commissions. And this moves us into new business. First item is to consider appointments to the Art Commission. This council wish to take any action tonight.
I moved, I moved that we appoint. Liz Holger to position three, term expiring May thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to fill position three, to appoint Liz to fill position number three for a partial term replacement. On the Arts Commission with a term expiring May thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
Um, she has a, a very extensive background in art. From her, um, degree that she got in years ago and. Does art with her, her floral design. I think one of the things that she, she mentioned is that she wants to see steady beautification. And to help restart community events and figuring out how she can do that with the Arts Commission and how that can be achieved. Um, and wants to give back to the community, um, and creating a more visual presence. So there's definitely that desire to restart, rebuild, continue on the work that's already been done. Elevate our communities.
Thank you, Beth. Christina would like to speak to your second.
Sure, uh.
Sure, uh Liz was delightful and very humble about her experience. And as, as she kept talking, it was very evident that, you know, there's a wealth of experience in. Um the arts, um plural, from floral to, to uh. Even the Leonard, the Leonardo da Vinci program decades ago. Um but she is definitely very enthusiastic and has an imagination that I believe would serve as an asset to Covington. And the Art Commission.
Thank you, Christine. Is anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? It's been moved and seconded to appoint Liz Albert to fill position number three. For a partial term. Replacement on the Arts Commission for a term expiring May thirty first, two thousand twenty six. All those in favor state aye. Uh any opposed? The motion passes and congratulations, Liz. Next is new business item number two. Consider appointments to the Youth Council. We have two openings. Or two positions that we can fill. Term expiring June thirtieth of twenty four and another one expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty six. This council wish to take action tonight. Debbie.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to move to. Um appoint Evelyn Bachu. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly to fill position number one on the Youth Council. Uh with term expiring June twenty fourth of twenty twenty four. Um Evelyn.
I gotta get a second.
Sir.
Uh I would move that, I will second that, but I would move it to term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Since she graduates in twenty twenty six.
Oh, that's a good point.
Is, um that's a friendly amendment. Do you?
Yes, I agree.
Agree with that, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Joe.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Evelyn. Bashu to fill position number three on the Youth Council. With a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Uh Debbie, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. Um I, I think we all loved the, the one word that Evelyn spoke of throughout her interview, and that was flourish. She wants to see our youth flourish. And um she had a, a couple of ideas, um building a sense of trust within the community of youth. Um she also spoke about something that she sees happening in our schools, and that is negativity, bullying, mental health issues, drug use. Hate speech. Really sad to hear all of that, but she feels that we can have creative solutions around those things. Um she believes that understanding the youth's point of view and listening. Um and trying to get to where the root of the problem is, is where our Youth Council can help build. Um some unity with our, our community.
Thank you, Debbie. Joe, would you like to speak to your second?
She was just very energetic and. Uh as much as I think our Youth Council already is energetic, having more energy is going to lighten them up just that much more, I think. And it's going to be a, a positive impact. And I think she's going to bring that energy and she's going to be, uh she's going to work hard for them.
Thank you, Joe. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? All right, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Evelyn Bashu to fill position number three. On the Youth Council with a term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty six. All those in favor state aye. Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, Evelyn. This council wish to take action on the second um opening. Beth?
Uh I move, I move to appoint. Abigail Castillo to Youth Council Position Number One with a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded to appoint Abigail Castillo. To fill position number one on the Youth Council with a term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty four. Beth, would you just like to speak to your motion?
Uh yeah, I, she has a very interesting perspective, and I think um one of her, her angles. Uh that she's passionate about is representation. Um and I think that will be a great, that would be a great addition to the council. Equity, uh particularly when it comes to some of the school, like after, after school activities, school buses. These are themes that we have already been hearing from our, our Youth Council, so. Um I think she'll be a great addition in that regard. And. One of the things that she did mention is that. To be an ambassador for the city is to be sharing what the council and the city are doing and to help uplift people and to promote volunteer oppor- opportunities. Among the youth. So um you know, I feel like not only is she passionate, but she's. Passionate about bringing other people along.
Thank you, Beth. Debbie, please, your second.
I, I would make all of the same comments that Beth did. I agree. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Been moved and seconded to appoint Abigail Castillo to fill position number one on the Youth Council with a term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty four. All those in favor state aye. Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, Abigail. Should have brought this up at the approval of the agenda, but new business item number three, we actually did not. Interview anybody for this position, so we do not take any action on this. So let's move to new business item number four, which is. A SR five sixteen corridor study briefing. And we have. Well, Dawn, it's Delaney's segment. I'm looking at the wrong part. Delaney, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you guys for having me. Lynn, do you have a PowerPoint to go along with this? All right, everybody can see that screen. Okay, thank you all for having me here tonight. Um so I'm here to present just a brief summary of where we're at in this SR five sixteen corridor study. And what we have coming up in the near future. So to start, I said a brief summary, but then we're going to go back to the beginning. This project actually got started with the progression of another project. Which was the SR five sixteen and Covington Way Intersection Improvement Project. And with that project, we were planning to add an additional turn lane in both the east and westbound directions. So that's shown by the bottom left image. And both of those speed on to Covington Way. And being a state route and being an intersection improvement. This needed to go through an ICE, which is an intersection. Uh sorry, intersection control evaluation. And this goes through Wash Dot for review and approval. And it was as Wash Dot was reviewing this, that they were interested to see how this intersection would operate as a roundabout. So with that, they offered us funding to work with our consultant transpo group. To work hand in hand with Wash Dot to go through this corridor study. And determine how this roundabout would affect the remainder of this corridor. And so the reason that changing this intersection type. Design to a roundabout has such a big effect on the corridor is because each of these intersections are spaced very closely. So this study incorporates that Covington Way intersection. It also incorporates the intersection one sixty fourth at the library. It takes into account the SR eighteen on and off ramps for both east and west directions. And then our intersection right outside of City Hall, which is one sixty eighth. And here's the big drumroll reveal, but we initially developed eight different designs for this corridor. And we have since narrowed them down to four main alternatives. So here are just three of those alternatives shown, the top of which is a peanut roundabout design. Named appropriate for, appropriately for the peanut design between the one sixty fourth and SR eighteen westbound ramps. The middle one is the DDI, which is diverging diamond interchange. And that one is a little bit more unique because it sends vehicles. On what would be appearing as the incorrect direction to travel. So if you're heading in the eastbound direction, you travel through the roundabout and you end up on the north side of the roadway. Now, these are becoming a lot more popular because it makes left turns a lot safer. And it's also very good for traffic congestion, or for avoiding traffic congestion. The bottom design is the five roundabout design. So that is keeping our current configuration of all of our intersections that we have and changing those signals to roundabouts. The fourth alternative, if you notice that it's missing, came into play a little bit later, but I have a screenshot from our traffic model. And this is a spooey intersection, which is a single point urban interchange. And the way that this operates is that it takes the interchange of SR eighteen. And it creates that convergence point directly in the middle, which is under our bridge here. So we have these four major designs and what we as a city did with Wash Dot and with Transpo. As we went through a pretty hefty evaluation period. And some of the criteria included safety and traffic operations, accessibility. Constructibility, environmental impacts and community support. And so these are just our five main categories. And then we had subsequent data that we used underneath to. Kind of rank each of these designs and each of these sub criteria. Um that community support section, so for example, that had quite a few components to it, but. One portion of it was. Community understanding and user usability in a sense where it's. We have a lot of roundabouts in Covington. People are familiar with them. Whereas they may not be as familiar with driving on a different side of the roadway. So familiarity. And then the other part, part of that. Is involved with, if you remember, that we had a survey that was released back in November of two thousand twenty two. And that survey was to collect information on how users felt about each one of these intersections. What the positives were, what the negatives were. And what we got from those responses were that the highest value criteria, number one, congestion. People don't like traffic. And then number two was safety. And that was pedestrian safety, bicyclist safety, and also motorized safety too. So those were considered in all of this evaluation. So once we went through that hefty evaluation. We found out that our preferred design was the five roundabout design. And so a couple of reasons why this one stood out. Number one, because of that traffic relief. These operate very well for just moving people quickly through the corridor, not long queues. Just not a lot of delay time. And then the other portion of that is the safety. So one piece that was evaluated was the impact points. So that's determining the number or the number of points in an intersection where there can be impact, whether it's. Vehicle on vehicle or vehicle to pedestrian. And then it was also evaluating how severe those impacts are. Is somebody more likely to have a fatal incident if they are impacted from a vehicle through a roundabout? Or if someone runs a red light and hits someone crossing the road? And so those were just some of the key pieces that created a bigger difference in that scoring matrix. So next steps in this, now that we have our preferred design. Wash Dot is releasing an online open house and they will be going over the similar information. They'll be presenting what evaluation we went through. They'll be showing this proposed design of the five roundabouts. And that's expected to come out this fall. They will also be presenting some interim improvements because to be very forward, this is a big project. While we will be pursuing grant funding. It will take time for us to get this designed. It will take time for it to get built. So what we want to do is to be able to incorporate that public feedback. Into some interim improvements to show that we are taking care of these concerns in the meantime. We will also be getting a corridor study report from our consultant transpo group. And then Wash Dot would like to do a formal presentation to council to give a little bit more detail into the study. And that will also be kind of wrapping up everything that's in the report, which is. The basis of the study, how we got to this design, what was all considered. And so I, I say a briefing because I don't want to ruin all the mystery of what, what they're putting together. But with that in mind, I'd like to answer any questions that you guys have.
Council, any questions? Joe?
So this was just a little funny one, but can we not make, can we make this a six roundabout and take it to one seventy second? Where we'd seen, seem to have a bunch of cars run into T-Mobile over the last few years. So just, just a thought on that one, but. I do like this because as someone who's been, who learned how to drive in this area and has dealt with. That intersection right there by Highway eighteen and has cursed that intersection for the last twenty years. I'm very excited for this. Uh but I'm also worried that as much as our residents want. Things to improve on this. Uh we know that they're going to complain every step of the way because we all complain about road construction and how much it backs us up. It solves a problem but creates a larger one while it's being done. What are our steps for? Uh promoting this project and letting our residents know and how long this will take. Because as much as I think Wash Dot having an open house online, it's going to be, a lot of the people present will be us. So uh I'm just wondering how we're going to be able to promote this better than just uh having a Wash Dot online, open house.
Yeah, and I think that the main hope with the open house is just to get more engagement. And it will be collecting public feedback on how people feel about this design. Um but as of right now, we have just a brief update on the project on our city website. And we'll continuously update that, especially if more grant opportunities come available, just to keep everybody informed. And I wouldn't be opposed to just having more um main page pieces on our city website to link to that to. Update citizens as we go through. And as for the construction part, that was a big part in our evaluation too. Was just determining how to phase everything so that we're not dealing with years of construction in that already backed up area.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
Thank you. Um what does the actual reduction in congestion look like? Through these studies? I mean, wh- what do we potentially get out of this?
The way that we went through and rated each of, I'm not sure if we should get this greater.
I know, it's really confusing. It's fine. You can actually look at council because that's how I see you. Yeah.
Um so when we went through and we evaluated the traffic operation, that's all done based on a level of service. And so that ranks through levels A through F. And we have F and D being failure. So each of these designs were put into two different types of traffic models. And ran on different, with different environmental factors on understanding. Um with different design years. So depending on what we anticipate traffic being like in the year twenty thirty five. And so this design. I, I can absolutely compile an exhibit to show what our existing configuration would look like in twenty thirty five. Compared to what this proposed design looks like in twenty thirty five, because it's pretty, it's pretty.
Yeah, that would be super helpful. That would.
I can definitely do that.
Thank you.
Anything else, Jennifer?
No, thanks.
Anybody else? Sean?
Um this is great, uh pretty exciting to, to see. Thinking that's kind of outside the box on how to continue to address. Traffic and congestion in Covington. I, I appreciate that. There's, so if there's five roundabouts and you've got a numbered one through five, does that mean number one is going to be the first one built? Or is there a, what's the prioritization process for which one gets built first?
Not necessarily. So that was the initial thought process was that because we had the project SR five sixteen in Covington Way that we would start with that. But from our traffic models, how those results have shown is that by constructing. These roundabouts in parallel, that is what really is improving the traffic. Just constructing one roundabout isn't making. A ton of difference, but it will also depend on what kind of funding we have available.
So if I understood you, a couple of them could be, be built at the same time. Okay.
That would be the goal.
Um I saw in some of the pictures that it showed the roundabouts. Going into what currently now is private property, because there are going to have to be some purchase or imminent dom- domain of some people's property.
There would certainly be some right of way acquisition. It may not necessarily look exactly like how that's showing. Uh this is very preliminary, but for the most part, I don't see a way around no acquisition.
And I just have one last one, sorry. And I just have one last one. Sorry. Five with five roundabouts, um, there's going to be um, space in the middle for what I hope is public art. And um, uh, I would hope at the most western one Washdaw is open to putting up welcome to Covington sign or something that brands Covington. Kind of like what they did with Kent in their brand new roundabout. I mean, it's just really uh impressive. So yeah, don't uh up well, when the open house comes, we'll definitely talk about that, but I just think that that the public's gonna, like Joe said, it's gonna be interesting to see how they respond, but um, but this will be unique in that we have five of these. And there could even be the opportunity for a theme on each one of those, you know, whether it's seasons or um, you know, we've got our elements on our Covington thing that talks about the different things that we value. I'd be really curious to see us make sure that we seize this opportunity to really brand it and kind of change and elevate Covington's image just by driving through, so.
Yep, I like that. And we did talk about doing, it was Washdaw that brought up that first intersection on the west side being the the introduction into Covington sign, so.
Thank you. That's it.
I don't know. I'm a real visual person and I can look at graph, you know, charts and pictures and that's great, but I'm wondering if, and this might help folks wrap their head around what the change might look like, if there's a way to do a like a a VE kind of like a scenario, like you're in your car and you're driving through like what the final product might look like and maybe they can get a bit of an experience of it. So you know, because change is frightening and the sooner we can get like some of those things ahead of, you know, out in front of folks. Maybe they can start working through it. It'd be easier to see exactly what's going on and maybe take some of that unknown out of it. I mean, the the diagrams are great. I mean, it's awesome, but there's a way to maybe incorporate something like that.
Yeah.
Presentation of the open house or what?
I absolutely agree with you. Um, I don't know if we could get anything before this Washdaw open house, but it could be something that we do in the future. Even if it's not a virtual fly through, we could try to do some three D rendering to get a little bit of.
Seen that before with I ninety when they did a nice.
Yeah.
So you could kind of pretend you're in.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I have seven questions. Sorry. First, um, I know we have to wait for grant funding and and I'm sure some of this you've already thought about. But hopefully, construction of that section won't happen until after Lake Point Boulevard opens. That way we have a bypass to help with the construction.
Yes, yeah.
And then the next item on the agenda is finished also, item number five, which helps with that. Um, the roundabout at one sixty-fourth. Which should be by the library. There's a lot of traffic that comes down one sixty-fourth. Is that because it looked like it was only a s- a single lane coming off of one sixty-fourth? Or is it two lanes coming down?
Honestly, I would have to go back to the design's luck, but I know.
That's that would be one of my concerns because that's a lot of traffic that comes off one sixty-fourth. And with that, so I would hopefully that's into consideration. But with all of that, hopefully we can get grant funding at the same time for the rapid flashing beacon lights at each of those intersections because that's going to be very hard for people to cross, especially handicap people that have a good time walking already.
And it is an ADA requirement now for multi-lane roundabouts to have the flashing beacon.
Oh, great. That's good. I guess I don't have seven because you already asked the land question. And then going back to the construction, hopefully would be nice to get grants for both that section and eastern five sixteen at the same time, but not have construction all the way down five sixteen. So um. Question, going off of what Joe said, going the east way, but what about the west side with one fifty-sixth? Because that's a really bad area where people are come flying off of that, cutting across all the lanes so they can turn right onto Covington Way. Did the study, I take it the study didn't look at that intersection? Do we have plans to look at that intersection in the future?
We didn't incorporate that in just because the majority of the traffic flow was between this set of intersections. Uh, but it's certainly something that we can look at. They have the data in the program, so it wouldn't be difficult to take a look at that.
And then the probably the thirty million dollar question on top of this. Putting a roundabout at Covington Way, is that going to require us to put a bridge in to take out the culverts for decree?
So we, yes, sorry.
No, no, that's good. Right ahead.
With our Covington Way project, we had planned to do a replacement there and take out that culvert. Um, and so that was already moving forward. We had had communication with the tribes. And so this plan has already done a preliminary look at what that future size would be. And hopefully we can move forward on that sooner than doing the grand design even.
Oh, perfect. Okay. That's all my question.
Don't be thirty million concerned on that.
Well, I am because look how long it's taken to build the one we've got because of that bridge.
Yeah.
Not not our fault. Right. Sean?
Um, thank you and thank you, Delaney. I just wanted to add to that a little bit is that as the, as Delaney alluded to, um, we're hoping that we're still working with Washdaw that now that we have this uh corridor study. We have existing funding right now for for design at Covington Way and right away acquisition at Covington Way. So that's what our current funding is right now. So if we were to try to expand to change our design to have, you know, more um basically extend the length to add like more design for the roundabouts and that type of thing. We don't have funding to be enough funding to do that. So we've been talking a little bit with our funding partners is, hey, do we, do we do like sixty percent design of or thirty percent design of a larger corridor? Or or where does that sit? And um, so we're still working with them a little bit. Uh, we might also be able to, um, now that we have this overall master plan, we might be able to now wash that. Our improvements don't preclude, for instance, say we make the the culvert long enough to uh facilitate the roundabout in the future. Uh, but maybe we can, we can come back now and keep our scope to be kind of like interim, having the left turn modifications in the interim as we're seeking additional funding for the entire corridor because of the, as you mentioned, the timing of that to get the funding for that to go through the design, the environmental, the right of way, you're you're talking about several years. So we we don't want to not be able to benefit from making improvements now. Uh, we still have a few things that we have to work out, you know, uh, in that regards to what we can do. Uh, but we're hoping to still maximize that funding and get some improvements out there sooner versus later. Again, uh, it's always barring to get the funding for the construction because we still don't have that. But uh at least uh we're trying to work through those aspects to have some sort of interim improvement um is is kind of what we're leaning towards, but you know, a little bit, I don't want it too much of the cat out of the bag, so to speak, since we haven't uh gotten all approved by Washdaw. But that's a little bit of kind of where we're going and but we wanted to give you a little bit of an update of where things are at. Um, and then as as Washdaw comes in, um, you know, have more questions for them a- as we as we go through that. So.
Thanks. Anybody else? Delaney, thank you for a very thorough report. Thank you for working on this. Uh, next is new business item number five, consider awarding the construction contract for the southeast two fifty-sixth street overlay, hundred and forty-eighth avenue southeast to one fifty-sixth avenue southeast project. Dawn?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, as mentioned in your uh blue sheet, um, you obviously didn't have the bid results from the uh project because the bid opening was today. Um, so I'm pleased to announce that uh we did have uh good results in our bid opening. We had two um two contractors submit and that was uh Lakeside and Icon Materials. Both of those bids came in under uh budget, so uh that was uh great. Uh, the engineer's estimate. I have way too many things open here, so bear with me. Um, engineer's estimate was about five hundred and two thousand. Uh, and Icon Materials bid was four hundred and fifty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. So uh, what does that mean? Um, well, um, if you look on your um in your packet for your your blue sheet, uh, when we talk about the um the uh, in the fiscal impact section, particularly down towards the end, the estimated budget and estimate expenditures. Um, we talk about the original funds was the total funds of the project was eight hundred and fifteen thousand. So our our required match for that was fifteen percent. So that would have been the hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-five was what we already said, okay? Um, uh, when we accepted the grant, we were like allocating that hundred and twenty-two thousand. As we started looking at this project, um, particularly with the the pavement and where it was at. Uh, there's been a number of concerns about the the intersection at one fifty-six and two fifty-six, particularly the uh uh left turn movements a- and that. So we were like, okay, um, the what precludes us from doing that is it needs a little bit more widening. Um, we're like, okay, that's that's asphalt and we've got to modify some curb and things like that. Well, as part of this overlay uh project, there is ADA requirements that we have to meet as well that are grant eligible. So we're like, okay, this contract or this project will have concrete work and it will have overlay. Well, or or pavement work. So we're like, well, this is probably the best way for us to economy of scale. Can we see what it would be just to make those uh those uh improvements or those modifications at that intersection? To include that in the bid and then see where those come out at. Um, in the in the blue sheet, we talked about the ed- educate, excuse me, estimated expenditures. And we had in that at the time, that's that fifty thousand, six hundred and sixty-two for the additional scope for the intersection work. When so coming out of this bid with uh Icon Materials, that number's basically the same. It it came in at like forty-nine thousand or something for that. That is already included as part of that four hundred and fifty-four thousand. So that's in that bid um for that amount. So that's the total, including all of that. And I just wanted to uh give you an idea, a visual of what um that uh looks like now and what the planned improvements uh would be at that intersection. So bear with me here as I uh attempt to uh share my screen here. Let's see. This right. Okay. So yeah, there we go. So um, one fifty-six, two fifty-six. So um, uh, east-west, two fifty-six, north-south, one fifty-six. Down here in the uh southwest corner is the new uh Covington Elementary School. Okay? So if you if you see here and I'll zoom in um on here, you can see that coming westbound here. Um, you have a single lane and you have a right turn lane here that goes to one fifty-six. Uh, same thing here, eastbound, you have one lane each direction. So a lot of the issues that we had is that say for this vehicle that's sitting here right now, if it wanted to make a left turn here and it starts uh traffic backing up here, we had people that would come across here and kind of dart back and and get across here and maybe someone was trying to turn left here also. And so there were some additional conflict points or concerns of that. So we're like, well, what can we do? Well, obviously we need some more space. And if you look between these two points on the western side, that's pretty tight, right? That's actually curb sidewalk right there. So um, let me now attempt to see if I can switch this um and show you what uh we are uh showing. So what? See, is it going to let me do that? Let me stop, share and reshare then. Here we go. So everything in red would be the new channelization. Yeah, I'll zoom in here. I just wanted you to see the the overall extent of it. And and now it's superimposed over the lanes that you can already see, right? So so what this does then on the, what would be the east side? We now show this left turn uh lane in here, a through lane, and then we still have the right turn lane. So that's still lines up. But the pro, if you look over here, now this whole area is where that additional widening, here's the curb where it is sitting now. And here's the edge of the existing asphalt right here, these lines of the three. That's basically showing the edge of the asphalt. So what we would do is then widen this asphalt out here. We would have this curb return come around here, you know, have the new ADA ramp now sitting in here, have uh a little bit of a shoulder still. So this then allows us to have a through lane here, have a left turn pocket, and then this still line up with with this through traffic here. And and that work would there would be the piece that would cost us about fifty thousand dollars to do. So then the question comes into um and I guess on that note, I'll pause. Is there any questions on the channelization or how things are or what we're thinking of?
Thank you for this. Um, the question I have do is, isn't there a light pole there too in a crosswalk? So that would have to move and that's included in the fifty grand as well?
So the only thing that, so we have a modification in this right here. We have a push put, push pad uh button that has to move because there's a pole right here. So that's included for those modifications of the six park that needs to do in that.
Really good.
Yeah, so we had to do a little bit of that in here. So that is included in the scope of that to be able to make that, make that all work.
Great, thank you.
So um, so great question. Anything else? Any other questions right now?
Do we have to do any land right away?
Nope. If you look on here, our right away line is back here along this.
Okay.
This is.
Oh, I didn't see that. Okay.
So we're still sitting, we're still sitting good in that regard. It does, it does come back over here a little bit and bumps back. Um, but at that point, uh, we're already we're still, we're still outside. He's needing additional right away to make this happen.
We're only having to do the curbing on that one corner. From the northwest corner.
Yeah.
Yeah. And there's enough room on the east side of that intersection to put in an additional lane.
Yeah, you get the lanes are reduced. Uh, but we feel like operationally wise, it'll still function because we're taking from the right turn lane. But but it's still wide enough to handle that. And then usually if you've got someone up the lane, it'll function fine since you have since you have enough lanes in there. So it's not just like only two lanes with a tight ten, two ten foot lanes, but you actually have uh wider lanes adjacent to it. So yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Um, so then let me just um stop this. Uh, okay, perfect. And I'll uh finish. So as far as funding, when we were um initially, we talked about the hundred and twenty-two thousand that we initially uh were uh having as our match, and then we would have fifty thousand dollars to do this. So our our um cost for the city would be about a hundred and seventy-two thousand nine twenty-seven, so it's almost a hundred and seventy-three thousand. Well, with the reduction of the bid results and that type of thing, um that comes out to be our total cost, including what it would be uh with the one fifty-six comes in at a hundred and thirty-eight thousand for us. Um, so that's a reduction of thirty-four thousand from what it originally was. So you're only sixteen thousand dollars more than what you initially said you were going to do, and you get the improvements at one fifty-six. Um, we're likely even to break, that's still including the full design and construction management support dollars in there. And we're likely to come in under based on some of the numbers we're having also with our consultant. The design is done, we're coming in under, and it looks like our construction management support will come in under. So we might even be even another eight to ten thousand less uh once we're all set as far as our costs. So we're even closer to getting to that uh one twenty-two that we initially talked about. Uh, the source of that again is would be the first funds that we would be using as far as that TBD funds that we would have, which would be going towards uh the overlay and making these improvements at this intersection, which I think would be a great improvement based on uh the uh uh, you know, the feedback that we've gotten from uh people in the area. So with that, uh, I'll answer any questions. Hopefully that wasn't uh too much or too confusing.
All right. I don't see anybody. So pardon? Yes? Okay.
It was our consideration of just not even worrying about that right turn lane that's traveling westbound and just turning that into straight. Line or?
Yeah, I think we could do that too in the sense of operationally wise, if we have, uh. If we have issues, it'd be easier for us to change that. I think it is, it sits now because of the. Configuration, the expectation, it would be nice to try to keep that and make as little move, uh, changes at first. And then if we have to later, we can, we can obviously stripe that and it's. You know, it's, it would probably be a few thousand dollars to do that, to change, but I think that that would be something we could take into account, uh, in the future operationally.
Okay, before us is the potential to award the construction contract. For the southeast two fifty-sixth street overlay from a hundred and forty-eighth avenue southeast to one fifty-sixth avenue southeast project. CIP one zero two eight to Icon Materials of Pacific Washington. The lowest, most responsible bidder and to authorize the city manager to execute minor changes to the agreements as necessary.
So move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
Well, when our original thought was we'd spend a hundred and twenty-two thousand and then add another fifty thousand. To be almost a hundred and seventy, I'll just say a hundred and seventy-five thousand. While tax in there somewhere, uh, and now Don's telling me a hundred and thirty-six thousand coming out of city funds. Sign me up. This, this road needs the overlay. It's needed the overlay since I was in elementary school. It's needed the element, it's needed it since Jeff moved to the city in the eighties.
If I'm not responsible for a beat bad.
Yeah, no, you're not responsible, but it's been, it's been, I think this is. I'm excited that we're going to finally do this because that's what, something my wife has complained to me about since I've been on council. Uh, and so she, so eventually she'll be happy after the construction's done, of course. But getting this done and getting it done for as low as the hundred and thirty-six thousand and maybe lower than that, come just out of there with the rest coming from grants. It's a no-brainer. Let's get this done. Let's get this road fixed and let's put a turn lane there so we can be safer.
Thank you, Joe. Christina, I'd speak to you in a second.
I'm just so excited. This is getting done. I'm not the wife, but I'm also the one that complains about it daily. Um, it's a vicious road to drive on and I witnessed what Don was talking about all the time. That is. And, and with the fact that there is a school crossing there, it, it just, it just needs to get done. So thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? I just want to say thank you because I believe it was Sean who kept pushing for this project to get done. So thank you and to see it coming to fruition.
Joe, thank you.
Thank you. With that, and I sure, I know everybody else has been pushing for it as well. Um, it's been moved in second to award the construction contracts of southeast two fifty-sixth street overlay. One forty-eighth avenue southeast to one fifty-sixth avenue southeast project. CIP one zero two eight to Icon Materials of Pacific Washington. The lowest, most responsible bidder and authorize the city manager to execute minor changes to the agreements as necessary. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you all very much. Don.
Yes, just one more thing, just, uh, just to clarify, to make sure there's consensus that. You do want to do the improvements at the intersection, just clarification.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. I figured that, but I just wanted for the, for the, uh.
Well, you said it, you said it was already included in the bid.
Yes.
By all means, please. So thank you, uh, for bringing this forward and making it come to fruition. All right, that concludes new business. Next is future agenda items. We have a. Study joint session with the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission. And looking at the, um, July eleventh meeting. Will do recognition of district legislators and our two thousand twenty-three citizen of the year and honorary citizen of the year. Also, we have been getting a lot of comments about, uh, the statement, um, about a project that I made a statement about earlier. And is there consensus on council to have the, um. The B E S S. Um, brought for discussion as a new business item on July eleventh.
Yes.
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 Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
More specifically to discuss potential net steps.
Yes, I'd like, yeah, thank you for clarification to, um. Next steps so that we can move forward with, uh, what is on there. And I know that other news came out today. Um, that the CUP is withdrawn and they're maybe going in a different direction. I did have a conversation with our King County Councilmember Reagan Dunn about that. And he will, um. Push for a public hearing.
Correct.
In the Covington area, um, whether it's done by King County or he does it. Um, but there, he will work with us to, for that, to see that happen. Uh, and he's also aware of what's been going on. He's been following it as he's been getting a lot of the emails as well. Is there any other items that council would like to see on a future agenda item? I should back up. Reagan, do you need anything else from us on that subject of the battery storage facility?
Not at this time. I, I don't think there's anything for staff to prepare at this time because council needed to discuss what that next step is and then we'll prepare something after that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, let's move into council staff comments. Start with Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Just want to thank you, uh, all. We are, air conditioning was completed, uh, on Monday. Uh, so officers are, uh, very thankful as it, it's right as it starts to get warm. So. We're very appreciative and very thankful for that. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Ethan.
Uh, hi, Mayor. Hi, Council. Uh, I do have a couple items. One is next Thursday on July sixth. Uh, there is a legislative tour of Covington Community Park Plan. This is being organized by. Washington Wildlife and Recreation Coalition or WWRC. Um, they, uh, promote and advocate for state and federal funding for. Um, securing grant funds for parks like CCP and Covington Community Park did benefit from. Uh, that kind of funding as well as other park projects in the city have also benefited from that type of funding. So. Um, they like to bring the, the legislators out, show them kind of the end result of that type of funding. Uh, and advocate for it in the future. Um, so with that, they also invite. Uh, the local electeds and so I'll be following up with an email, uh, if anybody else is able to attend. It is going to be at eleven in the morning. So I know it may not be convenient for some people. Um, it is completely optional, of course. Um, and as of right now, um, the legislators planning on attending our representative Entamon and Senator Kaufman. Um, then looking ahead even a little bit farther on July eleventh. Um, which is actually two weeks from today. And would be right before the council meeting at about four PM. We're planning a groundbreaking for Founder's Park project. Um, this is your typical, uh, gold shovel, um, digging and photo opportunity affair. Um, we're planning for it at four PM, um, unless council has any objection to that. Um, we'll send out an invite to that, uh, in the next couple of days. Um, and that's all I have tonight.
Anybody have any questions for Ethan? Ethan, I'll be at both those events.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coordinating that. Uh, Dawn.
Uh, thanks. Just one, one thing, uh, in regards to our five sixteen project, um. Uh, we've talked about the, the swap from traffic from the south side to the north side as they build. So we're getting a little bit closer to that. Uh, it's pushed back a little bit. They were talking about, uh, the beginning of July or somewhere around there. Um, looks like it's a little bit closer to mid-July. So, um, we are, uh, we'll keep council updated on that. And of course, we'll send out. Uh, things to the citizens and stuff as well, but wanted to just give you guys a heads up that that's where that's at. No other, no other things. Thanks again for, um, support of the projects and stuff like that. Appreciate it.
Great. Thank you again for, uh, the two fifty-sixth. Order. Thank you. And thank you, Delaney, for the five sixteen update. Appreciate it. Um, Selena.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. I have nothing for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Selena. Casey. You're on mute. You're on mute, Casey.
No.
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 No. She's not.
Try again, Casey.
All right, how about now?
There we go. Perfect.
Weird, I'm not muted on my side. Okay, um, just two things. Sorry about that. Um, first off is that the new, um, point one percent sales tax is effective on Saturday. So July first, so our sales tax rate will be increasing from the eight point seven to the eight point eight. And we should, uh, we anticipate starting to receive the proceeds from that in September because of the two-month lag in the, um, collections. From the state and then passed on to the city. And then the second thing was, um, just in terms of the, uh, body worn camera presentation that we had this evening. Uh, the, the city has received an estimate from the county of seventy-five thousand dollars annually that that will add to our contract. Uh, so I just wanted to let you know, I'm sure we'll see some prorating of that this year as they're slow to, to roll out the process. So just those two things. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Mark.
There's no executive session tonight and I have no further report.
Thanks, Mark. Reagan.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I hope everyone has noticed the nice colorful, beautiful banners, new banners we have hanging around town. They liven it up quite a bit. And then also today was the kickoff for ready, set, play this summer. I think this is our seventh. So, oh, Jeff, Jeff has his lanyard. Did you go pick it up today?
I picked him up out front.
You gotta hear, okay.
Out there. So my girls are, we've already printed out everywhere to go. They've already mapped out which day we're going to each of them.
Good. Yeah, uh, we handed out over a hundred and thirty lanyards today and actually had families coming and picking up rag tags already. So. Uh, we have a couple more businesses involved this year than we had last year and, um, it's looking good. Another, uh, lanyard pass out tomorrow as well. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Krista.
I think you've probably heard enough from me, from all the messages I've left in your inbox over the past week. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
I just want to say, Krista, thank you for being so attentive and responding to each and every one of those emails. Um, it's very much appreciated. And I know that you've been putting in a lot of time and it's taking time away from your other jobs, but it doesn't go unnoticed. So thank you. And thank you to your boss for allowing you to do that for us. Thank you. Christina.
Um, what a great meeting. So much information, good information in such a short time. I love the efficiency. Um, AWC was amazing. Thank you, uh, for letting us go and represent the city and. Uh, vote on behalf of the city. Um, for example, the presentation about Kirkland. Um, and their middle housing. I got to sit in on a class, I believe it was with Reagan, uh. Where they really dove in deeper on that. And so it makes a lot more sense to hear, um. Feedback like that. But other than that, um, nothing else for me and enjoy your weekend with sunshine.
Thank you, Christina. Beth.
Just wanted to echo appreciation for Krista. I was trying to think in my head, how are we ever going to tackle all of these emails? And you just went in and did it and I was, so thank you. Um, and I also wanted to, to give a shout out to, to Don and his team because I was looking at the consent agenda item with the rapid flashing. Beacons and thought, oh, we came in under on a project. Cause that, you know, just, just not normal. And, uh, not through any fault of anyone. And I thought, oh, that's great. And then we get the double whammy with potentially, I mean, it is not over until it's over. But still some positive news. So thank you so much for all the work in managing those projects. Appreciate it. Um, nothing much else other than have a happy Fourth of July. And there is plans in the works for a purple light night, some kind of a ceremony on September thirtieth, save the date. Uh, six to seven thirty PM. We are not quite sure all the details, but we'll let people know and. If we have, can have council members or staff or commissioners sign, um, show up for that and support that. And we'll work with external groups as well. Thanks.
Help me and I'll be there.
Awesome. Yeah.
Thanks, Beth. Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just a quick update on the huge sound regional fire authority. We had a meeting last Wednesday. Um, agenda, uh. Included my, uh, in public comment, talking about the meeting we had had on the battery energy storage system. So bringing them up to speed, thanking the RFA for being there. They, um, uh, reported that they continue to be in communication with. King Fisher and, and are working on, um. Plans on how to address, um, an emergency at that facility. So they continue to work with them on that. Um, they also mentioned that, um, uh, wildland fire season has started. So it's not a surprise, um, even though it's cooler and kind of wetter over here. They have. Uh, assisted some of our, uh, sister fire stations on the east side of the mountains already and sent. Pumper trucks over to, I believe it was Wall Wall to help suppress fires over there. So. Um, they're anticipating could be a long season with, uh, a lot of their. Fire equipment in, in firefighters being sent to other communities to address their wildland fires. So. Um, and then I guess the only other thing is, um. Talked about annexation and Toquilla is moving forward on that. So wanting to stay in compliance with the rules. I'll just leave it at that. So. That's it.
Thanks, Sean. Debbie.
Thank you. I'll just echo, um, what Christina said about AWC. I was a first time attendee, so it was, um. Uh, great for me and great to continue the networking with relationships that we had started back in January when we were all together down in Olympia. Um, one, a, a couple of sessions that were very, very interesting. One was on AI. I've shared a little bit about that with some. But there are some ways to, to capture, um, AI and use it for our benefit. And some around, um, public records requests that can automate things. Um, but then a lot of pitfalls and, and, uh, risks out there as well. I'm sure we're all aware of that. So. More information, uh, will be gained. And I just want to say thank you for letting me be the proud bearer of the Covington flag. And I, well, thanks to Reagan, we brought it home safely. And I didn't trip carrying it across the, uh, room. So. It was fun.
You did great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie.
Thank you.
Jennifer.
Um, I just wanted to thank Krista as well. There are so many emails and I'm on vacation trying to be on vacation. So many emails. So thank you so much for, uh, for responding to all of those and keeping everyone informed. Also, I'm really looking forward to Covington Days. It's pretty exciting that so many commissions are going to be in attendance. So. Um, I, I think that will be great. The, the more the merrier and, um, I'll be back in town next week. Thanks.
Thanks, Jennifer. Joe.
Uh, so I think we had a good meeting. There was, uh. Uh, I, I was very appreciative of the King County Regional Homeless Authority, uh, coming in and giving us a presentation. Uh, while I have personal feelings about their effectiveness right now, I do think they're trying to fix that and I'm looking forward to seeing where they go. Um, and in, in thinking about that, I am reminded that one of the causes of homelessness is mental illness. And, um. One of the things that we tend to forget sometimes is May was mental health aware, uh, mental health month, mental health awareness month. June is men's mental health awareness. And that is important to me as someone who has had struggles with depression in the past, who has family who have depression. Uh, some minor statistics are six million men suffer from depression per year, but many go undiagnosed. Men, uh, while not as many men attempt suicide as women do when they have depression. They are more likely to succeed at suicide because I hate to say this. We're gonna, if a man's gonna put it, his mind to it, he's gonna complete it because they're gonna use a gun or something or another form of device. But they're gonna complete it. Be on the lookout for your family, your friends, anyone you may know who has shown issues such as, you know. Mood changes. Violent or abusive behavior that is new. Get them help. It's important. We are living in a time where suicides, depression, all of these things are becoming more and more prevalent in our society. And we need to do something to stop it. And it will help in the homelessness crisis. It will also help to make sure.
And it will help in the homelessness crisis. It will also help to make sure that everyone can go home to their families at night and not have to deal with the issues we've dealt with over the last five years. That's it.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, I just have two things. One, I really enjoyed my time, um, at Association Western Cities. I know there was a lot of breakout sessions, um, but I spent most of my time uh, in the sessions that dealt with diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. Which until last Wednesday, I had not heard of that. And I was told that evidently I wasn't around for two years. So. But, um, but no, it was, there was a lot of wealth of information on that and a lot of different topics. And it was definitely time worth spent and not just learning about the different topics, but about the connections made with our other electeds of our other cities, not just locally, but statewide that in the past, this helped, like even when Reagan and I have gone out with transportation issues, reaching across the state to help get, um, people to be on our side to help with, like, look at highway eighteen now. That, that goes connection. You're planting the seed now that you can use in the future. And then, uh, the only other thing is the battery energy storage system. I'm glad we're gonna bring it back next, in July eleventh, to discuss it more. So that our constituents who have shown their action for a topic and, um, and have asked us to help them with what needs to be done. So I look, I look forward to that discussion on the next meeting. Uh, that concludes our council staff comments. So it brings up our second public comment period. Speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating virtually, click the raise hand button in Zoom. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants you permission to speak, press unmute if participating virtually or dial star six. Unmute if participating by phone. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council? Is there anybody online wishing to address council? Please raise your hand. Seeing nobody raise their hand and no further business to be concluded and there is no executive session, this meeting is adjourned at eight thirty-two or nine thirty-two.